Yeah.
Call the meeting to order and start on that.
Everyone, welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of July 24th. Okay. And, um, okay, we're much better. I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 7:03. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now I'll have a roll call. Maureen.
June Daly, present.
Julie Millard.
Here.
Diane George.
Here.
Him Zigma.
There.
Brian Rogan. Not here to be, wasn't right now.
Yeah.
Got Hamel.
He, uh, he's excu-, well, he's supposed to be on Zoom, so.
Are you on Maureen?
I.
Okay. Nope, is he recorded? So. You can get him on here.
Okay, maybe I need to talk closer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Said he's blocked.
He's.
Oh, who's blocked?
Oh, he must be on his other email. I'll find him in a minute. Um, and Chairman Beely.
I'm here.
So we do have other participants, so hold on and let me find them.
Yeah.
Nope, he, uh, maybe attendee one. Nope, Steve Biella.
That's Steve Biella?
Yeah. Well, I'm gonna promote him to panelist. It's warm in here in a moment.
Hello, everybody.
Oh, hey, Steve. Thanks for coming. Thanks for joining, 'cause you'll be seated this meeting, I believe.
Oh, I do not see.
Mr. Hamel?
Mr. Hamel, no.
Call Scotty and tell him.
Tell him what?
I don't know. What, i- is he, is he on his town? See if he's on.
Not, he should be, he should show up as an attendee.
He says he can't get in. He's. Hey, are you on your town email? You can't get into either one of them. He can't get into either one of them. Either one. Oh. Hey.
So it's 7:03 before the meeting business began. Brian Rogan has a line.
Yep, Brian Rogan is in person. He's on his tablet.
Yeah. He's on, he's on the tablet? Did you, did he go through the, um, ask him if he, ask him to pull up the agenda?
Can you pull up the agenda? Click on that link.
Open the, yeah, open the Outlook.
Content is blocked.
Content blocked?
Be his browser.
Well. Okay. Can he be excused?
All right, we'll, we'll excuse him, 'cause he can't get on. He says his content is blocked. Okay, yeah, we'll excuse him.
Okay, he's been excused.
All right.
Okay.
Tell him he has to call Kate Wall. Or.
Actually, the IT guy.
No, 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 he has to call Kate Wall about the, the conflict of interest paperwork or whatever. All right, but Brian Rogan's here. So Steve Biella, we're still gonna ask you to be seated for the meeting, um, and you can help, uh, fill out the commission, and you'll be seated for, uh, excuse, uh, Scott Hamel.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right. Okay, so the roll call is done. We're all, we're all good. So first off, we have the receipt of the new applications and scheduling of public hearings as required or necessary. We have A, a site plan application for Brookside LLC for the installation of a temporary power pole at 4:30 Christian Lane in the GI Zone.
This does not require a public hearing, so nothing needs to be scheduled. However, at this time, um, the application appears to be incomplete, and both P and Z and in the wetlands, which the application was also made to, needs some additional information, um, and details on the plans. And therefore, I would just, um, because we're having discussions with the applicants, ask you to just wait to determine if it's a complete application for receipt until the next meeting.
Okay.
Motion to, uh, table until next meeting.
Motion by Mr. Zigma. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. George for the discussion. And all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Okay, thank you. Now we have the approval of the minute meetings for July 10th. I.
I'm sorry, those were not.
Okay.
Due to stopping.
All righty.
My fault, sorry.
No problem. You had a bit, you, you had a crazy week. Okay.
Motion on that to table, or?
No, we don't. No, it's going faster than I thought. Okay, great.
Just skip ahead.
Yes.
He, well, you don't have.
All right, skipping ahead. Oh, okay. Do we wanna make the announcement that the site plan application for the Caryotti, Caryotti family, um, partnership for the construction of a parking lot on the Berlin Turnpike, um, and Stone Drive is being postponed until.
Motion later, but just announce if.
But we're making the announcement in case anyone online was interested in that specific item. It will not be heard this evening. Okay, and do we know when it's going, we're gonna make, it's gonna go pushed off to this, uh, August 21st? It's being pushed off to the 21st of August. Okay. All right, so, but now let's open the regular commission business?
Thank you. I'd just like to let people.
Yeah, 'cause you never know who's online, who's just dying to participate. Okay. Item A is the Connecticut General Statute's 8-24 referral for a lot line revision and sale of property at 143 Percival Avenue for the purpose of development of affordable elderly housing as approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission at its June 12th, 2025 meeting.
So, um, at that meeting, while we had kind of a peripheral discussion about the 824 being included, no motion was made, but, and the town council hadn't actually referred it to you yet, so this is, um, to clarify, um, your endorsement, presumed endorsement, because you approved the plan of that referral for the lot line revision that makes for the 15 feet along the top of the property line, adjusting that previously approved lot line revision along the north end of the property and Percival Park, and for the lot line revision at the southerly end of the property, um, connecting adjacent town-owned property to Longdale Street. We've talked about it.
Mm-hmm, we did talk about it.
You had the map.
Yeah, yeah, all right. No, 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 that's okay.
Actually, so what I.
I do remember some discussion.
Get a copy of the map yet. They've seen the concept map.
Okay.
However, and that's what you saw as well, because the surveyor is working on the exact map, the.
Oh, okay.
He's working on it exactly so that it does not, the, the revision at the north end of the property doesn't interfere with their, um, detention area that was already pre-designed.
Okay.
And their setback to the building that was approved.
Okay.
Designed. So they were working on the very particular portions of that, but it is that map that was all included on the design that you saw and approved for the development.
So it's housekeeping. Okay.
All right, so I will make a motion to, um, approve the referral of the, uh, section 824, uh, for lot line revision and sale of property at 143 Percival Avenue for the purpose of development of affordable elderly housing.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. George. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Daly for the discussion. All those in favor?
Uh.
Those opposed? So moved.
Abstaining.
Abstaining is Mr. Rogan. Okay, um, item B is the site plan application. Well, that's the Caryotti, so do we need a motion?
We need a motion.
Yeah.
Need a motion.
Okay.
Um, I'll make a motion to postpone item B, site plan application of Caryotti Family Dip, Family Limited Partnership. To, uh, the motion is to postpone this matter until August 21st.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Zigma for the discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Okay.
Well, at, at, at the request of the applicant, and they did provide the extension time.
Okay.
Use of the extension time, and they did, um, send us a written, where it's found for this week.
Okay. Um, next item is 1676 Berlin Turnpike Trans, uh, landscape discussion.
So if you didn't see this last, um, last month.
Oh, okay.
But, um, Pat Snow is here. I just saw him.
Okay. Oh, just skated in on two wheels?
And wanted to just re-review for the couple of little tweaks and the difference in the plan, so that he makes sure that you're, um, satisfied throughout. Um, if you don't mind, I'll let him carry that, but if you want me, if you don't wanna have the applicant speak, I will.
No, that's fine. He's here. He made the trip, so.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening.
Just to set this up, what we had, a little bit of background. On the landscaping plan, we had the landscaping plan approved, as the commission knows, and as the landscaping quotes evolved with different landscapers, there became issues of these species and this species and heights and, and other items, so. Uh, in order to address that, 'cause I don't have any experience with that, just I kinda rely on others, so I hired a landscape architect to come in and to review the entire plan and come up with recommendations, which is the plan, I believe, that was distributed here.
Okay.
And, um, I have Justin Russo here, who had designed the plan, so if there's any questions, he had written a cover letter as well. Um, he's got photos and other items of, of some of the, his recommendations shown in other locations. Um, he'd be able to speak to that more, in more detail, if there's some specific questions, but that's the reason we're here, not trying to change anything. I'm on, I'm gonna own this property for a long time, hopefully, and I wanna get things that last, and we're not gonna be here cutting things down in the next five years.
Okay.
With that, I will leave that to the commission to ask any questions, or if you want us to go through a presentation, I'm happy to have them come up to.
All right. Um, well, you might wanna come up, just to sort of join in the party, and, um, because if the questions start flying, they could go, they, they would be feverish. Um, so the changes are earmarked in red? Is that what it is, or?
Correct.
Okay.
That was something that I had prepared for Pat Snow here.
All right, now I went by the site and the berms, or is that the set, is that the height of the berms that are gonna be?
Oh, yes, that is, that is.
Okay.
If you've been by, I don't know if you've been by today, currently, all the planties that are showing that plant are installed and are in. Um, so that's, we, we had taken that liberty to go and do that, because I'm trying to get COs coming up this week, so I would jump ahead a little bit.
Okay.
I took a one little question on that for when I.
Go ahead, Mr. Zigma.
I drove by, uh, seemed like it's really pitched up high, you know, fast, you know, it's not spread out, you know, it's, it's narrower burned than I expected, and it just.
Did you see that today? Or was that?
About three or four days ago.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, they might've, I don't know, I'm thinking if they planted, they might've cut off the cap.
Of our restrictions are gonna be encroaching on the Berlin Turnpike. We were trying to keep away from that as far as possible, and then on the other side is our building, so I believe it's the same, um, slope as it's shown on the plan, but just might be higher, if that was, I forget, it's two to one or two and a half to one. So, two to one, so we're the same slope as what's there, but just higher, and we went closer to our building and held the Berlin Turnpike's s- side where it was.
Okay.
Good.
And just out of curiosity, that berm, how are you gonna stabilize it?
It's a no mow, no mow seed, uh, so it's a seed, uh, w- grass that grows, does not need to be mowed or maintained, uh.
I want some. What is it?
It's a, it's a mixture of, uh, fescue grass.
Okay.
So it just gets to a certain height, and then it, it doesn't ever exceed that. So, yeah, mowing is very infrequent with that, you know, probably only gonna need few times a year.
Wow.
The two-on-one slope there is, you know, it's not ideal for mowing, so we wanted to do something that was gonna need limited maintenance, but also still provide stabilization on that slope.
Okay. Questions?
May I just?
Yes.
That it looks like, um, I saw Scott Hamel raised his hand, but I'm not seeing him anywhere, so.
He asked if we see him.
He what?
See the map. He's, he's connected, he's on now.
Oh, he's on now?
But he's currently not seated, if you did see Steve.
Yep.
So.
Well, that's okay.
See if I can find him, but. Once I finish screen sharing, I'll be able to.
Put him on a speakerphone.
Yeah, I have to promote him. Oh, I wanna just turn my power. I thought I'd need this, but I don't. So if I can answer.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm reading what the big red X is. It says proposed, removed, so maybe explain why those changes.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So, uh, those Xs are primarily in locations that either had conflicts with utilities, um, or had, would pose some long-term maintenance issues, uh, primarily on the western side. A lot of shade trees were proposed there, Green Giant Arborvitae. My concern was that they would get large enough to the point where shade trees would be too close to the house. The Arborvitae would grow too large, and together, they would both, uh, decrease air circulation and sunlight to the existing Norway spruce, which is providing a lot of really valuable screening right now. Um, those Norway spruce, they, uh, are susceptible to, uh, like a needle cast, it's, it's a fungus. And having that poor circulation and lack of sunlight can exacerbate that condition. So, in order to keep the screening that was back there, and also prevent constant pruning, uh, in the future, I had suggested to remove those. In their place, I was looking to continue the, uh, evergreen understory of the rhododendron and the inkberry holly, uh, because those are both very valuable, uh, landscape plants, provide evergreen screening year-round, give some really valuable understory screening, you know, in the six to 10, or four to 10-foot range. The existing Norway spruce are doing the bulk of the upper story screening, and those shrubs will provide some understory privacy there. That was my intent with that.
So which ones are these ones here? Um, and I don't, and I don't see them in the key, so. They're like the little burst, sun, starburst here in black on the, on the, um.
Correct, yeah. So in the key, they're gonna be the second items from the top. There's actually, there's two shrubs there. The smaller one is on the northern side, but the larger one's on the western side, so that would be your rhododendron and your inkberry holly.
Okay. I think she's referring to the black stars that would be the original trees.
Yes.
They're still there.
Those are the existing Norway spruce.
Those are, oh, those are existing?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
How'd those handle the construction?
When I was out there, they seemed to be in fair condition. Uh, my understanding that, I believe, an arborist has been on site, so they, they seem to be okay to me. They were still providing, had good foliage, needles, they were still doing, still doing their job, you know, providing that screen. They're nice and tall, too, so are, they're growing nicely.
Mm-hmm. Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Daly.
So you, you may have talked about it, and I'm trying to follow. So next to the question with the black starburst, the green, how tall are those? I think part of the neighbors' concern was that it's elevated, and they were gonna see these towering apartments over there, so how tall is that?
So.
Green barrier.
The ones that are, that are being removed are the proposed ones, the ones to. Yeah, so the proposed ones, uh, the rhododendron will be, you know, they'll probably get to a maximum of eight feet tall, uh, and then the holly, uh, will be, uh, probably four, five feet tall. Uh, and they'll also, they'll flesh out, too, you know, they'll, they'll grow wide as well, so. And the rhododendron, they have a nice purple flower on them. Uh, the inkberry holly, they're both native plants. Uh, the inkberry holly, you know, provides fruit for birds, um, appetite for insects, so. They are a very popular landscape choice, a nice shrub, in my opinion.
Okay, anyone else?
Just a comment.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. George.
Um, in looking at the plan, uh, I'm a fan of kind of mixing things up, um, so that if you end up with a pest problem that is really difficult to control in one tree species, at least you have others that might kind of, uh, replace or automatically fill in.
Understood.
Um, so that would be my only comment on this, is that I, my preference would be to see kind of, uh, mix instead of all solid rows of the same thing.
That's a lot.
There is a mixture on, on the western property boundary. The northern property boundary is, uh, it's just a row of the Itea virginica. You wanted to see a mixture of shrubs there, I'm happy to provide that. The berms, they do have, they are using that soft-serve cypress, uh, just to provide that, you know, that screening.
Is, that's not a dwarf variety, right?
No, that, that grows to between six and 10 feet tall. Uh, we were concerned there with, you know, the Green Giant Arborvitae were proposed there. They get very, very tall. They can get up to 60 feet tall. So the concern with that was if at any point in the future they fell.
Yeah.
On the home, homes, or the power lines into the turnpike, uh, so that soft-serve cypress, six to 10 feet tall, it's on top of a four, four-ish foot-tall berm already. Uh, so I think that would really provide some valuable screening from the turnpike.
I'm sorry, how tall's the berm?
Six, six eleven, sorry, there.
Oh, I thought it was six eleven.
Anyone else with questions? Online? Do we have any, uh, comment from Steve Biella, or?
Nothing at this time.
Okay.
Well, the only other thing I wanted to point out, um, hasn't done it yet, is a long.
One at a time.
Oh, okay.
The question became up, you know, since that, that part said, I didn't wanna any confuse anything, so that, that. The second part, which, uh, someone brought up, was about the trees. So, in this BIA's project, the certified arborist, we hired a, a person. Uh, he came out and did a report, and at the end of the project, we came out and did another report, which I believe has been provided, or I'm not sure if it has or has not.
Might have been copied, I'm not sure.
Didn't, okay, so the, the summary of that report is, everything looked good on the site, with the exception of one tree along that back line of that he recommends being removed. I don't think it should be, 'cause the, the image that we, we protected, that everything he said is minimal at best, the tree's still alive and functioning, and the neighbors along Holly Court were, oh, if we, we were walking with them, they said this might come down. They did not like that, uh, that, the discussion, so my, uh, representation to the town and, and on the record here is that, let's leave that there. If there's a problem in the next one, two, three, five years, we're happy to cut it down. But rather than do that now and create issues in the back, I would propose to leave that against the regula-, the, the person I hired to do, but that's, uh, just kind of where we, where we are, and.
But did he give you a reason why he thought?
Saying, 'cause the way the sewer was, you're supposed to be, and I'm paraphrasing, let's say if the tree is 18 inches around, you're supposed to be 20 feet away. We were 16, so we were just on the edge of that, that root line, where the sanitary sewer runs up from there, so it's close, and we were careful and clipped the roots, but his opinion was that he, he would like to see it removed.
Okay, Maureen.
We did go out with Public Works.
Uh-huh.
And they agree. It's fine, it should be fine.
Okay.
Seen an issue with the sewer line, from their perspective. They think it's fair to, to wait, and if it needs to come down, have either town staff, regular town staff or the tree warden go and look at it if it becomes compromised, and then, um, I think what Pat's ultimately asked for is that you allow the staff to handle that. If the tree starts to deteriorate, we can make that decision. If it needs to go, or the tree ward.
Okay.
The most likely one to make that decision.
Yeah. All right, okay, that's fair.
You need an approval, or?
Or is there any other things that you wanted to adjust? Now, as far as your landscaping within the project, um, you're, you're beefing that up, too, right?
Say beefing it up, we're, we're.
Well, I mean. Well, I mean, no, 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 what I'm saying is that, um, you're still giving consideration to the different units. I see that you have scattered trees without. You're doing some flower planting and stuff.
What you see in front of you is what we're going to have there, which are pretty much there right now.
Yeah, okay. All right.
I don't know if anyone's driven by, but you'll see, I think it looks.
Nice.
Yeah, I have to.
Just look at them.
Yeah.
Haven't driven by in a minute.
Okay.
I just wanted to say, I appreciate that you've talked to the neighbors through that process. It sounds like you've had a good communication, and they feel comfortable, so I, I, I just wanted to say thanks.
Welcome.
Okay. Because this was a stipulation, I think that any, um, that you, um, um, agreeing to this plan is, it should be a motion, just to show that.
Yeah.
It's, you know, that is your consensus, and there's no issues, just so we have it in the record.
Okay, terrific.
I will make the motion, then, to approve the revised landscape plan, um, with the, uh, the condition that, uh, Ms. George stated earlier, or Commissioner George stated earlier about a little, adding a little bit more diversity to the species, um, and that the tree in question, uh, that needed to come down can stay as long as it's kept an eye on, and he can deal with the town on that one, and, um.
All right, that's your motion? Do we, okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, second by Ms. George. Further discussion, then all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Good night. All right, you get to go home when the sun is still up.
Can I ask a question, though?
Hold on, wait.
Was the drainage resolved? The. Weren't we asking for the, um, engineer to confirm that the drainage issue was gonna be satisfactory?
Where are.
Weren't you in to talk to us?
For the swale?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, that's the, with my problems last week.
Yes, that, that was.
I'll go talk, I will make sure.
Yeah, Jim was out for final inspection today, and he saw we, we winded up.
I won't, yeah, just wanted the engineer.
Oh, all right. Jim, well, I, I, yeah, I haven't, I have not seen.
Yeah, I'll, I'll put a new note in to talk to Mike about it.
Good catch.
I wasn't here much after your meeting.
Talk about that, too, tonight, but.
Oh, okay, all righty. All right, thank you. Okay.
Oh, I'm gonna stop sharing and see if I can, either Scott can talk, definitely, but I don't know that he was a panelist yet. Yeah, he got.
Yeah, okay, so Scott Hamel is here. All righty.
I'm here.
Well, we don't, well, we don't have anything in, we don't have anything in public hearings, so honestly, if we're just all talking, and this is commissioner business, everyone can participate, right? Am I correct in that?
I am.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, fine.
Decided people to take any votes.
Anyone?
Yeah.
You allow them to.
You can't vote on it, or do, you know, do. Yeah, exactly.
Um, Scott, for some reason, I'm not allowed, oh, it says, finally, it's allowing you to rejoin as a panelist. You are already promoted to allowed to speak.
All right.
You're a panelist.
Well, that's good. All right, and we're moving right along. So now we're up to item D, which is 265 Lincoln Street for David Barbogallo. We have a discussion of the modifications of the approved ADA, ADU, excuse me, configuration for a staircase from the side of the house to the rear of the house. Okay.
You might remember, four months ago, you approved this plan on this, um, special permit use for the accessory dwelling unit. Um, it was configured for the, um, staircase up to the unit to be on the side of the house, um, and it kind of looked, there, there was.
That was the spiral staircase, wasn't it?
It, it was a very, it was, it was an oddly configured staircase.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, 'cause Alexa did more of the work on this, and we really didn't see each other this week, um, because she went on vacation.
Yeah, but it was like a, there was a spiral staircase that, and it was inside, yeah.
Little vestibule and.
Yeah.
Staircase.
Yeah.
Went up to the door into the unit. Um, when they did their design plan, they, um, determined that it would be better for their construction if they put the stairs on the back of the build, of the house, so, um, you know, this doesn't really affect the special permit, 'cause the special permit is for use, and they are staying within the 150-square-foot addition that's allowed for an ADU, um, and the stairs don't count as floor area.
Okay, and the stairs will be enclosed?
Back to that either, but now they will be an enclosed set of stairs, um, that appear to be solely for the purpose of entering this unit, won't have a door into the house, too. It'll be stair, enclosed stairs up to.
Yeah, so they'll come in.
Second floor.
Come into a little vestibule area, head up the stairs, and then they have their apartment or whatever.
Putting that on the back instead of on the side of the house.
That might, okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a, by, well, motion was by Mr. Zigma, the motion, uh, the second is by Ms. George for the record. Uh, further discussion on this. So, all those in favor, aye? Those opposed, so moved, okay. Next up is Orsini, we have a landscape modification discussion. Everybody wants to talk about trees. Alright.
For this one, um, again, like with, and if it knows, um, we do have the applicant here, the capacity for the applicant. He is here, um, he can share his screen and probably make much more sense out of his summary of its modifications than he's reiterating what he, what, what we discussed. Um, I did already and you can see by, um, I think in the, your package, you have an email from me to Mr. Orsini, um, a month ago or so, that said they could proceed, I felt, you know, within my discretion, they could proceed. But if the, if, when we brought, because they were starting the planting before it got too hot, you know, they wanted to get things going. That they would then, um, if there were modifications or concerns, as it either immediately or as it matured, um, they'd make adjustments based on your recommendations once we brought it to you. But that's why they were able to start what they're doing, you know, the plantings they put in and some of the changes they made. We allowed them to go ahead with that after a multi-department staff meeting.
Okay. Alright, so.
Jim, right now we're seeing your emails.
You're seeing my email, I'm showing you the wrong screen, let me share.
You can't read them though. Thank goodness.
Let's see, you don't want to see the emails. Let's see. See if this will work. I just went to a three-screen setup, so you have to, um, give me a second to get used to it here. Okay, try this. Okay, can you see the screen now? Can you see my screen? Hello?
On our microphone, yes, we can see.
Okay, um, so for the record, my name's Jim Cassidy with the engineer and engineering firm, Halsey Pearson and Cassidy. Um, I'm here tonight, uh, for John Orsini. Um, he is the owner and developer of the new apartments that are being constructed on Episcopal Road. Uh, if anybody's, billions by, we're pretty much nearing completion of that project finally, after about six years. Um, and at this point, uh, over the past couple of weeks, we've paved the roadways, parking areas curved. Uh, and as Maureen's mentioned, um, we're trying to get ready and start the actual landscaping. Um, BL prepared the original plans and presented to you, uh, for the approvals. Um, I got involved in the construction phase of the project. Um, and as we took a look at the actual landscaping and how things are laying out, um, we ran into a couple of concerns. The plan I have before you, uh, is just the BL's original approved landscaping, um, on, on my sheet, um, where we just updated to conform with the actual site plan, uh, that's being constructed out there. I'll start on the north end, um, one of the things that we have is, you have a very, uh, obviously vigorous, um, buffer of evergreens. The evergreens consisted of spruces, um, some hemlock, um, and I believe also the plant list, if I can remember, uh, yes, spruce, you know, Colorado blue spruce, eastern spruce, uh, and then you also have eastern red cedar, uh, in that area. Um, so it was all evergreen, but the one thing that we are noticing is that those trees are all planted at a spacing of, uh, at a max of 10 feet. In some cases, actually less than 10 feet on center. And from 30 something years of experience in doing this, you know, it looks good initially. Um, but the issue we have is when you're planting those type of cedars, they'll tend to grow to be about 50 feet high and also end up with a diameter on the bottom of anywhere to 20 to 40 feet. Um, so in a very short time, um, they started choking each other out, and then you actually have to go back through and thin the trees. Uh, I was mentioning to Maureen, it's a similar situation I have in my office here, where I was required to provide a dense arborvitae hedge row about eight years ago, and now it's being cut out because they, they, it was so dense that it kind of killed each other at this point. Um, so what we're looking to do, uh, we've submitted a plan on the, um, northerly side of the project. Uh, we're looking to take those evergreens and spread them out to a spacing more, well, 15 to 18 feet on center. Um, what we've done is we updated our landscaping table, if you have a copy of the plan, uh, indicating the mature height and also mature diameter of the trees. Uh, on the plan itself, uh, we're showing a circle representing not mature, but for about 10-year growth of a tree, um, to give an indication of how dense it actually is going to be in a relatively short period of time. Uh, continuing on, uh, on the landscaping plan, if I go back to the original plan, on the east side of the project, um, up against Mr. Orsini's commercial development, on the site plan, originally there's shown a, uh, double row of arborvitae's, uh, emerald arborvitae's. Um, if you actually take a look at this, um, it's at the bottom of the slope, uh, there's a detention based in behind it. Uh, and that slope from the clubhouse up here, uh, to the downside slope is probably about 15 feet lower. Um, so what happens is, if it was intended that this was to screen, provide screening for the clubhouse, um, you're looking over, you're looking at the roofs of the, uh, commercial buildings. Um, so it doesn't really do anything, um, so what we're looking to do in that area, uh, is actually to move, they had the, uh, the, the row of arborvitae's up to the top of slope on the backside of the walk. So initially, it does have some effect on screening, uh, for the clubhouse and also, also for the commercial back to the clubhouse. So it gives a good barrier between the two. Uh, continuing on on the south side of the projects, uh, same kind of situation on spacing on evergreens. Uh, the evergreens that were proposed, a lot of them are spacing of 10 feet, uh, and we have, we have garages in this area. Um, so, and this is a commercial parking lot in this area, so the, the res, our residents are screened by the garages. And then the only thing we're screening on the backside is the parking lot to the back of the garage units on our development. Uh, we're looking to simply in that area, um, just take the same number of evergreens, but to spread them out. Uh, I'm giving them a little bit more room to grow and to thrive, uh, and to become taller. Uh, and then the other, the only other final thing that we really revised is when I go to the original plan, uh, if you look between the area of the building and the sidewalk, this area is about eight feet wide. Um, the original plan proposed to put, uh, flowering dogwoods in there, uh, or any mature flowering dogwood, could have a candidate be about 20 feet. Uh, and you, again, you only have about eight feet to plant these trees. So ultimately, those trees are going to be, um, hitting the side of the buildings, rubbing up and goes windows. Um, so what we're looking to do, uh, on my plan, from the current plan, is to eliminate the trees and provide foundation plantings in this area, plants such as shrubs, such as, uh, hollies, um, bayberry, um, and, um, maybe dwarf arborvitae's in that area, something that would sit below the window and not interfere with the window. So that would consist on the backside of the building, uh, at the front entrance of the building, so in this location here and this location here, we're still looking at having some, some type of a service berry tree, so a little bit taller, uh, something a little bit more ornamental, uh, but more cylindrical, uh, so it doesn't affect the building. The remaining portion would, again, have foundation plantings along it, so that would occur at each one of the buildings. So overall, we're just, again, working with the landscaper, um, and, and taking a look at the overall site and this past experience. We're just looking to kind of spread things out a bit. Um, so when the, when the project is completed, I mean, it's, it's five years down the road. Uh, we're not going back and cutting out trees, uh, and removing vegetation, uh, to make this work. Uh, we're trying to make the plants we are putting in thrive, rather than be, um, this issue later. So with that, um, I'm gladly taking any questions the commission may have.
Okay, thank you, commission, now we got the plan, we have a chance to look at it and do you have any feedback as far as the proposal goes? That you, Tim? Oh, do you have a question?
Yes.
Okay, you have an odd way of getting my attention.
On the northern, uh, northern part of the property, up against the residential property of.
Use your mind. You may not be able to hear you on.
Vivian Drive, uh, northern side of the property, you are eliminating some trees, spreading them out. I know originally, the reason for the thickness of the trees was to, to shield those residential properties. And, uh, I don't know, spread out, the spread they are now or different types of trees that will fill in, I don't know, uh. So, you know, because it, if it's, if it's open between the trees, it's not doing the job that it's supposed to do to the residential's.
Right, so we even, you know, I, I'm sure Maureen is aware that, well, we have been talking to the neighbors, uh, we went out this past week. Uh, we do have a 50-foot area between the back of the garages, um, and then the property line. The area was loaded with sumac, uh, we went back this week and we started clearing it out in preparation for the plantings. Um, we explained, uh, to those neighbors what we're looking to do. Um, and, you know, I didn't get any negative responses, I don't know if Maureen has heard anything, uh, but everything's basically seemed to be positive and everyone seemed to be happy with what we're doing. And again, you know, we are, we are increasing spacing, uh, so it does eliminate some of the trees. Uh, the original spacing is about 10 feet, um, we're looking to go from 15 to about 18 feet, uh, in that range. Um, so there would be a slightly less number of trees. But again, I'm just trying to make sure, we're trying to make sure that we'll, we've estimated all these trees that, again, you know, five, 10 years down the road, uh, we have a vibrant, uh, buffer in that area rather than, uh, going back and having to cut out trees, because they're starting to choke each other out.
I do understand, uh, what you're trying to do. Uh, my question is, the trees that were there before, uh, were put in as staggered trees, uh, some ahead and the others staggered all the way down the line, it looks like these are staggered. Uh, that staggered pattern, or if it could be a little wider, can put those cru, trees a little tighter. Uh, and, and do the coverage that we wanted, I just, the question.
So you want, you're asking me to put more of a stagger on these and tighten it up?
Yeah, a little bit more of a stagger, and that, that'll bring it down probably from 15 to 12, whatever, uh, up, apart, and they will stagger into each other, not, not kill each other.
We could, we take into consideration, I mean, like, I'll work with the applicant on it. And, you know, as long as it's okay with us working with staff, we're trying to get this done in a timely manner. Um, so if you, if you want to give a dimension that you guys are comfortable with, we can work with staff on that.
Uh, I trust staff to do it, it's just, uh, to, to help figure it out. Uh, I just, you know, the stagger was the purpose of the, the trees that we had in there, and I guess they were so close together, you're thinking that they're going, he hit each other, you know, if you had a little bit more stagger, maybe you don't. You know, a- and it's, it's, uh, looks like there's room back there to stagger them a little bit as they grow up.
There, there's a bit of room, but there also, uh, once we cleaned the sumac out, there was, um, you know, there is some, uh, other trees along that area, along that back property line that we're trying to leave in play.
Okay, anyone else with, um, sorry. Anyone else with questions, Steve Biella or Scott Hamel or, okay, Diane has a comment?
Well, I think I have a comment, I don't, um, looking at, along the north line, um, the choice of evergreens, uh, including the, uh, eastern white pine, and the eastern red cedar, the white pines would have a tendency to, um, lose a lot of their foliage on the lower part of the tree as the tree ages, um, and they tend to not have a very pleasing shape to them as they mature. Um, so I, I'm not certain that that's, um, the best selection there. Um, and then the eastern red cedar, it's native, it's good, that's, it's good that it's a native thing, because you're going to have less pest issues.
Those are the JVs.
They don't tend to be very attractive either. But they're pretty darn hardy. Uh, I'm just wondering if, um, at least the white pines maybe consider subbing something out with.
Sure, I could talk to the applicant about something else.
And then, um, the, the same comment that I had with the earlier, um, discussion with the arborvitae's in front of the, uh, proposed clubhouse.
Yep, to the rear.
My preference would be to see more of a mix of species there, in case you have a a catastrophic pest issue.
Okay, so different types of arborvitae's or, or?
Uh, something, something other than arborvitae, like in addition to arborvitae, so, uh, maybe arborvitae and white spruce, or arborvitae's and hollies, or.
How about a couple maple trees?
Well, so they're looking to screen, so they're, they want evergreens. Um, but some of the hollies will grow fast and tall. White spruce would be native, so fewer pest problems. I just, if you think about the places where there's solid plantings of arborvitae's, and the one place that sticks in my mind all the time is, uh, the McDonald's on New Britain Road. Their arborvitae's have been wiped out by bagworm.
Yeah.
And, um.
Yeah.
With the evergreens, once they're wiped out, they're not going to regenerate.
Exactly.
So look, look at replacing our bodies with a mixture of evergreens such as, um, holly.
Yeah, I'm not saying not to use the arborvitae, but just kind of have an assortment in there.
A good texture choice.
Yeah.
Well. Alright, anyone else with questions or concerns? Okay. Hearing nothing? Do we have a motion?
Um, I'll make a motion to, um, approve, uh, subject to the applicant working with staff on some of the details that we've discussed.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Jorsy, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Zigma, further discussion, then all those in favor, aye? Those opposed, so moved. Okay, now we have up, thank you very much, Mr. Cassidy. Um, okay, now we have a next item is, and the last item for that is going to be the discussion of the waiver of sidewalks on Victoria Court. Victoria Court. I'm trying to think of where that is.
Off of Chamberlain Highway, you have Great Oak Drive and Victoria Court is a, um, cul-de-sac off.
Oh.
Great Oak Drive.
Okay. That's like the, the horrible, the horrible farm.
Yeah. Horrible.
Okay.
Roller burger.
Yeah, they used to have the, um, the fruit stand there, vegetable stand there, okay.
Um, so this is a discussion still, because there's, there might be a couple of, um, legal motion wise that we have to go through that I haven't worked out yet.
So you're just looking for the consensus of the commission?
Sidewalks.
Yeah.
Are something that we, when you approve a subdivision, you, um, either, um, require sidewalks or you have to waive sidewalks, and that's a separate motion that has to be done, and that's the nuance that I'm not quite sure of. But you have in your packet this, um, this little map of Victoria Drive.
And can you bring it up for?
I was thinking faster, I would have done that already.
Alright, Scott Hamel and Steve Biella, just hang on, because we're going to try to get you the Victoria, uh, court online, so you'll have a, a view of what we have.
Looks like you did a lot of the court or the sidewalks.
Alright, welcome.
No, so on Victoria Court, that one property owner, um, put the sidewalks in when he did his landscaping. Um, you, to back up somewhat, you may remember that this is, um, was called Kensington Valley Estates. Um, and for those of you, actually, that wouldn't have been on the commission at that time. Um, the, the project, all the site, all the subdivision improvements were not completed. The bond was called back in 2009, I think they just wrote that all down. Oh, I know.
Well.
Um, 2007, this bond sheet, a bond was, was put together for it in 2007 for the subdivision. Um, $20,000 was set aside for sidewalks in the subdivision bond that the commission required for subdivision, for the first CL. Um, in 2009, P and Z called the 120. In two thousand nine, P and Z called the hundred and twenty four thousand five hundred dollar bond because the work had not been completed and, you know, so then the town proceeded to do some of the work. That included the top course of paving on the roads, lot pinning, let's see, but some of the other things they did, lot pinning, some grading, wetlands mitigation, conveyance documents, including the survey, the plan and profile for the street. And the town did a couple of years ago, I think it was in twenty twenty-three, except the street. The sidewalks left incomplete. Twenty thousand dollars for sidewalks, it does not even come close to what we would require for sidewalks today. It's about a good three times that amount. Or, or linear foot for sidewalks by current standards. So the town would not have, even with the rest of the bond money, would not likely have enough money to, to install the sidewalks. Let me just get do this on the map for the benefit of everyone.
So the town is asking for the waiver then?
So, no, so this owner of this lot that has
The sidewalk.
Sidewalk.
Wants everyone else to put it in?
Would like to be able to remove his sidewalk. He's doing some work and would like to remove it. And for going down that path of what does it take?
All right, let, can I ask a question? So we, the, it was approved, the bond, the bond was called. And we could only do so much with that bond money. We've run out of money, basically, the bond money. And so now, what sidewalk is there is there. However, to finish this Victoria Court sidewalk would cost an arm and a few fortune. And the town would have to pay for it. All right, well, I think that's a no brainer.
Okay, I guess there are sidewalks, it looks like going down one side of Great Oak. But they're not going down Victoria. I'm sorry, I thought the town engineer told me they weren't.
No, that's okay.
I will make the motion to approve the waiver of sidewalks on Victoria Court.
Yeah, okay.
Open for discussion.
All right, do we have a second for a discussion? Thank you, Mr. Zigma. So Mr. Rogan had the motion and Mr. Zigma, for the record, had the second, okay. Concern.
And the town did all these sidewalks on
Great Oak.
Great Oak. And only completed it to here, I guess. I would say I don't know how much twenty thousand dollars then, what sidewalk's in for years, I don't know what it costs.
It's going to cost a lot more than that.
That one side of Victoria Court should have sidewalks that you can walk on, on on a great oak and cross the street and go at least one side of the, the Victoria Court. I'm sure that the approvals at both sides. But if we give one side completed, I think it's gives back the most of what the law was intended on this project.
Well, I guess if the developer were here and the developer had the money for it, I would, I would say something, but the, the problem, the problem is, is that we're asking the town to pay for it. And I can think of much more important places to, for the town to spend money on a sidewalk than Victoria Court.
The money was taken for this development.
Twenty thousand, yeah.
And there's twenty thousand dollars left over.
So, right now, and that's why I said that it may not require a vote at this time because I'm not really sure of the total process to go one way or another with it. We do have to do some number crunching on what has been spent already by Public Works because obviously the amount for, say, the asphalt for the top course of pavement probably also did not match the two thousand seven number and cost more. So they were using the money of the, in the lot pinning. The lot pinning and those documents, we figure were at least ten thousand plus some other surveying that they had to do. We do own conveyance documents. We do still want, I, I strongly want, as the town planner, the open space while dedicated has not been conveyed to the town yet. And that will probably need to all be, anything that hasn't already been pinned for that will have to be pinned. And may, there was been some discussion as to whether as staff, we'd recommend some substantial marker or fencing along the back of the properties there because we've had consistent issues with encroachments. So there may be places there that if they're, depending on the amount left, if there is money for the town to do some other, other work with regard to the open space too, but certainly the conveyance of it.
That's a priority. Yeah, that's going to be priority.
Just on, on your point, Tim, I, I know that, since this is in the town's hands now, we're not preventing the town from putting sidewalks in there in the future. I know how we have that master plan and everything is being connected, connected, but I guess what we're doing right now is, even if we were to put sidewalks in in ten years in the future, whatever, you'd probably, the piece that this homeowner did probably wouldn't probably be old outdated and be not congruent with the new asphalt or new concrete that's going down. So really, the way I look at it is he has awkward sidewalk in front of his house and by lifting the waiver or allowing him to pull it out, that doesn't say that when the town is ready to put sidewalks in, like I know they want to all over town, that they can't just come and still put the sidewalk in. So we're not saying no to sidewalks, we're just really allowing this man to pull out his awkward piece of sidewalk. Like
Yeah, he has to go out and shovel it too.
Yeah, it's not, um, we don't have, we don't have a developer to hold, to the, to the fire.
Yeah, I understand your point.
Point is that the town, to me, when this happens, okay, the building, the property is supposed to be built out in five years. So five years, it'll, when the town should have grabbed that money.
And they probably did.
The cost overrun or whatever, probably wouldn't have been that much if it was done two thousand twelve. Our system there, whatever money's left over. You know, and I understand this is an area that I don't know if I would have set sidewalks back then at this development because these look like acre lots, you know, or more. It's just, when the bond is set, whenever we got to take over a project, and we have over the years working with you, actually, always seems to be a people, our monies, you know, can't complete it. And it's for completing, so either bonds have got to be set higher, which is usually a line of credit or something, you know, that's yet from a bank. You know, that we don't get it in this situation, you know. If these sidewalks weren't in on Great Oak, then I wouldn't even consider it, probably improve, you know, because there's nothing connected.
Well, yeah, but I mean, the sidewalks, out of the two streets, I think the sidewalks on Great Oak were probably more usable because people are zipping in and out. You know, whereas no one's zipping in and out right now.
Great Oak either. Victorious, they went outside walks and Great Oak is extended wherever we can extend it, or?
Well, let's, we, we have a lot of ifs, so I, I, and I don't want to tie the commission's hands or commit to anything at this point, until we find out exactly what kind of mess we're standing in. June, did you have something to say?
Well, and this might be for Maureen too. I mean, if we provide a waiver now, doesn't that waiver continue forward so that it wouldn't? I mean, they could argue against a sidewalk in the future because they say they've received a waiver.
So the, the, my opinion of that, again, not an attorney, but my opinion of that is the developer is responsible for sidewalks unless you waive them. So the, the town deciding that they have a sidewalk plan and want to put in sidewalks, the sidewalks are within the town's right of way. In most instances, there are times we have to talk to people who have lots, say, yeah, we got to squeeze it onto your property a little and whatnot and, and Public Works works through those unique situations. But it is generally on town-owned properties, so the town can go along and decide that, you know what, it's twenty thirty-five and we want sidewalks here. They, you know, the town has that, that right to do that for a subsidy. Or say it's now, and you've seen, you've, at a couple, several of your meetings, you've seen the sidewalk plan that the town has and that the town has been working on for connectivity. We've gotten grants for those. Four has come to you because then it's been a grant and, you know, all that. And these are roads that didn't have sidewalks, part of Meadow Lane, didn't have sidewalks now. And then grant hopefully to put in a little bit of here and a little bit there.
I think I would feel better if I knew what town really has for leftover, okay? Or if they do have anything left over at all. What can be done, get some kind of scope from the town, what can be done or not done. And if it can't be done, it can't be done.
So basically, what we have is a homeowner who has a stray sidewalk, piece of sidewalk, who wants to tear it up because he wants to redo something with the lawn or landscaping or something.
He runs a risk of
He runs a risk that
Ten years from now or five years.
So as long as, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with what he's looking to do, but he does, we do need to keep the door open. And so, I mean, I mean, I think that that's, I, because he's going to say, can I take, tear up my sidewalk? You've got to tell him something.
He came to town hall, talked to the public works and to our department. Said, I want to rip out this sidewalk.
All right, so
Said, we've got to figure out whether I can have the, the mechanism to get you authority to do that.
Yeah, but
Is there, it's just what that mechanism is. My take was that Public Works and Planning and Zoning Department could not make that decision. It was the Planning and Zoning Commission that required the sidewalk. Would have to say whether they supported him taking out the sidewalk or not. If you support him taking out the sidewalk, I can confirm, confirm with Corporation Council that no further action is necessary if, or he can say, yeah, you have to post it as a public.
Instead of the waiver, can we just permission to remove his sidewalk?
If you give him permission to remove the sidewalk, I'm just going to double check with Corporation Council that you don't need to do anything, they post it, you don't need to make a legal out.
I would question, I would question there if the sidewalks are probably on town property. Okay, so once they were built on town property, they probably became town, okay?
Property that the town has an easement on, he owns it.
I don't think so. I think he, I think the sidewalk's actually in front.
Sidewalks are always on town property.
Usually on town property.
Yeah, he's paying taxes on it. It's like the same with any of us.
Line should be probably about three feet beyond, behind. A two feet, one, two feet behind the sidewalk usually.
Easement for the road would be at least fifty feet. At least fifty feet.
It's from the center of the pavement.
Doesn't look like it's fifty foot wide.
To, into the lawn, the town averages about ten feet. On properties that belongs to the town and the sidewalk is usually within that ten feet. I didn't bring up his
Yeah, usually like ten feet.
Yeah, but Not accurate here because it's skewed.
But like all of us, we pay taxes on that ten feet. We have to be mindful what we do within that ten feet because we always have to understand that the town can come, so if I wanted to plant or put a stone wall there, I, I, I could do it, but the town could come and remove my stone wall. So I always have to account for that ten feet, although I got to pay tax on it.
We just had a new owner in a different part of town. Row of hedges all along the property line, all along the road. He was roadside of property line and Public Works had him, pull him out and put him back on, behind his property line.
So, so what can we do here to help, to help the homeowner, but to also keep the door open for the town? What, how, how do we do this? Or maybe we don't. Maybe we just say the consensus of the commission is we do not have a problem with you you at this time removing the sidewalk, however, let it be known that if the town should reestablish the sidewalk, then that same path would be then the sidewalk would be reinstalled. Could we do that? So it's just like a
But not at his expense. The town would be spending the money.
No, he's take, he's gonna, he's taking out, that's his expense.
Restoring lawn.
But if the town should decide that further down, if something else gets developed and we need the sidewalks, it's going to cut through that swath, so he needs to be mindful. Yeah.
So I'll rescind my motion then.
Rescind or adjust or what? Do you want to rescind?
Well, I'm rescind because we're no longer doing the waiver, we're giving him.
Okay, all right, so
On giving him the permission? If, as long as
We could just say
No other requirements by the Corporation Council recommends.
Yeah, we can make a new motion.
Yeah, okay, so you're withdrawing your motion, withdrawing the second, Tim?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so we withdrew it, okay? So do we have a new motion?
I'll make a motion then to allow the homeowner to remove his sidewalk, as long as he has that understanding that in the future, should the town decide to come put sidewalks in, that his property is still open, subject to having new sidewalk put back in.
So, do we need a second? No, I got to have a second before you can, okay, second by Mr. Zigma.
Just to add to that, is that the homeowner has to give a waiver of, when he's pulling out the sidewalks, if someone gets hurt or something, because it's on town property, you know? Sidewalks are on town property right now. You could see in the lot lines, the circle is lot lines property, the sidewalks are on the town property. So, so if he's in there working on town property, there's got to be a waiver to the town.
Yeah, we're going to be held harmless.
I will amend my motion.
The motion is amended, is the second amended? Is the second amended?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Further discussion, all those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Okay, on to our fun and games. Planner comments? Yay, no, no comments.
Little thing, I went to Fair Housing Commission Conference today. New Haven, it was very interesting. If the proposals in the bills that didn't, that got vetoed do go through or some iteration of them, and it's very likely that with the size that the town of Berlin has become with the last census, that they'll have to establish a fair housing commission. It may be a, able to be done regionally through the cog, but, or it may be something the town has to do. And we got a lot of really good information from both the tenants' standpoint and the landlord's standpoint. And I just wanted to share that, that there's a lot of people doing a lot of good work in this state to create things.
Were they aimed at other towns that are not meeting their responsibilities for affordable housing?
And no, it's not about affordable housing. A lot of the time about blighted properties that are occupied. So in Berlin, they wouldn't be considered blighted because we, they have to be vacant. But in some towns, they are, there are things that, that fall under housing code issues often. And, or are owned by the big companies that own huge amounts of rental properties. Not so much the mom and pop property owners that have small scale rentals, but a lot of times rentals and it's to protect. rentals. And it's to protect both the town, the residents and landlords. And it was just very interesting, um,
Yeah.
Topic and conversation. Anybody's interested, I.
Right.
You know?
Well, the other, the other thing is I just want to, because you mentioned blighted property, I just wanna, I don't know if we'd need to do a wellness check or something, but there is the, it's the old Nellawagick home on Orchard Road, uh, up near Blue Hills.
Is that the one near the barn across the street from the?
Yeah, the barn. That thing is so overgrown that I can't even see the windows or the front door anymore. And also I kept thinking is, is there supposedly a deaf child in there? Now, I've never seen any of these people since the day they moved.
Child there a year or more ago.
But somebody, somebody said that that, the kid moved out and that's not, the child's not there.
I'll bring it up to Social Services.
Yeah, but there's, there's something wrong.
Yeah, so hopefully tomorrow morning I'll remember to do.
So, I was.
What? Truck was gone today.
Okay, there's a, a brand new pickup truck that appears in what's left of the driveway and it was there for a long time and then now it's gone. But to, to Tim's concern, also I kept thinking is if there's a fire in this house or there's an emergency, they would have to bring machetes to cut through the vines to get to a point of access. People would die in that house. I'm telling you right now, I have no idea what the back of the house looks like. I mean, it truly looks abandoned. I can't imagine that somebody's actually living there.
What is our consensus, uh, for population?
Uh, probably twenty thousand plus, so almost twenty-one, I think.
Once we get to twenty-five, we have to get a full-time fire department.
Yeah, we gotta keep it down. I mean.
Jen, Tim's gonna hear it.
No.
State law.
But anyway, so the, this property, I, I'm, I'm, I'm just really concerned about the welfare of the people that are living there and I'm, you know, at first I thought, oh, they fell on hard times, maybe the mowers broke and maybe once somebody lost their job. Gas price was five dollars a gallon. So you never want to point a finger or anything, but it's been years now and it's getting to the point where I, I'm really concerned that, you know, somebody could have an experience in there and nobody would, nobody would know. I, I don't know how you would know.
Kind of like the lady that died in the heap of stuff.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, uh, I mean, the garage, you can't even, you can't see anything. It's just solid vines and.
Scott has his hand.
Yeah, Scott Hamel has his hand up. I think he probably knows the property. Why did you deliver flowers there?
Come back. No, I'm just kidding. Um, I have a question for Maureen.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Maureen, are you ready?
Yeah.
She's just taking notes on my blighted property.
Okay, so, um, there was a, a conversation that was brewing about, uh, the Angus Farm. Would that be in sold?
It has been sold.
And then the other, the rumor is that whoever bought it wants to put fifty houses on that.
So there was a, there, um, several years ago, um, oh, I don't know how many. Um, I think Helen was still here and she left in twenty seventeen. Um, they went through wetlands for approval of an open space subdivision that wetlands, um, granted approval on the open space subdivision. I'm thinking that planning and zoning may or may not have seen the concept plan before that. Um, you, you think you did see the concept plan that then allows them to proceed with open space subdivision as opposed to a conventional subdivision? And it's the same parties that did that that are, um, involved with the final eventual purchase of the property. And we understand they will be coming in with an application at some point in not the too far future.
I just have a question. As far as the zoning goes, I mean, wha- what do they need for acreage per house?
So that's all part of the open space subdivision. They calculated all that out in their concept plan. And I don't, I, off the top of my head, I don't even know how many acres it is. It goes all the way back and then it wraps around and out to Norton Road about the spot where you dip and go back up.
The memorial, the old memorial pool.
Yeah.
Yeah, opposite of the memorial pool.
Well, there's a brook there and a brook actually traverses the.
They went through wetlands and the open space parcels that, you know, so an open space subdivision, um, preserves more contiguous open space together than a conventional subdivision may, may in order to, um, for the, um, common term cluster the houses um, more together than they would be. And that is, I understand at the plan. I looked at the plan probably, you know, year, several years ago when we thought they were gonna be bringing in the subdivision at that time and then didn't. Um, but again, I wasn't the planner. When they went through wetlands, I was the assistant.
It's gotta be like probably one or two acres. I think it's a one or two acre zone.
Fifty, fifty houses I think is a, an absorbent amount.
It's my, maybe half acre.
An acre then that, that.
Yeah, I don't, I think that, I think it's not even one acre.
Basically it comes down to, uh.
No, I think they're bigger than that.
How many acres are out there?
Hundred and thirty-six.
Yeah, but you have to remember, we have.
Two zones.
No, but you have to remember, there's wetlands on there, there's a brook on there, this stream, and all that has to be deducted. That's not usable land. And we gotta protect that water course too.
I, I just had, I just had a question Maureen because it did come up.
Well, we, we, let's not go too much in the weeds now.
Um.
I didn't mean to.
I asked, change their graphics. And if I'm following their zone line correctly, it's probably an R forty-three zone. And the GIS shows it as a hundred and thirty-five point something acres, so, you know.
Including wetlands.
Yeah, that's the overall package.
Like I said, their, their concept plan did, um, you know, would have used the zoning, the subdivision regulations and the open space subdivision, um, zoning regulation to, to design it. Um, but as I said, we haven't gotten the application, so we haven't done an analysis on whether or not they adhered to all the provisions of the regulations, but I can't imagine they would have hired engineering firms and gone through wetlands without doing so.
I, I just, I just hope, you know, as a commission and as residents, I mean, look, this town is bursting already at McGee School. There's no room for fifty house. I mean, listen, you might put fifty houses, go ahead, but I'm just.
Okay.
Saying right now that I, we gotta really think hard and long when this comes in front of us.
Well, I, I mean, Scott, to your point, we'll just have to wait and see what the developer proposes. I mean, there's a lot of things that the different commissions have to take into account, so um, we're not gonna.
Put the horse.
Gonna, yeah, we're not gonna make a decision on it at this point, you know? Um, all right, okay. But yeah, it's, that'll be interesting to see. Okay, now we're just sort of, you know, no problem, Scotty, thank you. So we just kind of went into commissioner comments now. So status update, concerns related to approved development projects.
That carries across what you've, you've asked me to put on the.
Yeah.
Um, docket. Um, we don't really have anything new to report, you know, you got the ones for the landscaping right now.
Yeah.
No one coming in and actually no time to coordinate any of the developers coming in right now.
I, I, I think what, you know, just, just really quick, what I think I was trying to share is that, you know, as we talk about different developments, it's nice to see some of the architecturals and I find that sometimes they don't provide them. But with, you know, the architecturals that show us truly what the building looks like and, you know, to have samples of the materials or the colors that they want to use, I think is very important. Plus, you know, um, landscape's super important to me. Um, I, you know, I go around and I look at things that we've done in town. Um, precision punch still rocks what they're, they do. And I noticed that this, the, um, the building across the way, and I can't remember, was it Cisco or something? Um, what's the one that's on the corner of Demming and, uh, Christian Lane? That's right at the light, is that Cisco? Uh, they really stepped it up. They did some nice landscaping there. I, I really, I remember pushing for it and almost being laughed at about it, but I mean, they've really, they've actually put some more stuff in there and.
They came in for a special permit for a contractor shop, is it that one?
I think.
That's why you got to see it.
Yeah.
Otherwise it would have been a.
And it, you know, I mean, but when, as we push and we try to do these things, even though people kind of like think we're silly about it, it does make a difference. It makes a difference at Stop and Shop. It makes a difference in the center of town and, and, you know, that whole Christian Lane thing, those, those buildings came out nice. As long as we, we don't.
Go ahead.
Precision punch.
Yeah.
Didn't, they cut all those trees down.
They had to.
I know they had to, but they promised us to be putting new landscaping.
Yeah. Yeah.
Are they doing it?
No.
No.
No, they haven't done it yet, but they will.
All that they couldn't do because of the.
Well, the electricals are.
They had to take it down because they were getting old and, and stuff, so we'll double check.
They promised us all the land.
We're gonna screen that.
Gonna screen the box or whatever so we could bring it to their attention.
For like ten years.
Yeah, but I don't want, yeah, well, they did.
Sand and gravel place on Christian Lane that's now gone up, that's no Britain property and everything else, but, uh, I see other, uh.
How you doing? She's quiet.
Landscaping or material storage places on Demming Road, uh, and one other, there was two that I saw. Uh, you know, they didn't come to us and I just wondering how come they're doing it? You know, they're, they're doing, you know, right across from Sheldon, Sheldon Street. There, there's a, you know, big piles of stone and everything else, you know.
Nades?
Nade.
No, not.
Not Sheldon.
Some Sheldon.
So, Sheldon Street.
Okay, on the other side.
Yeah, across the street.
Road.
But, but, and there's another one.
Not aware of.
On Demming Road somewhere or, or, or Christian Lane. But I, I know I can't.
There is an enforcement problem, um, rather.
For the McDonald's.
Enforcement.
Talking about.
Issue with, with wetlands and floodway, et cetera. Um, kind of across from Sheldon, but it's really across from, more from Home Depot's driveway. That's, that's been an ongoing working.
Yeah, because, because a river goes through there and it's in the, I see some in the flood plain, I think.
If it's the one back there, that is being well worked on by the town and.
Okay, it's just, just like.
Just to the property where the golf is.
I keep on seeing things pop up that didn't come to this commission and I'm saying to myself, hmm, how's that happening?
Well, all right. Scott Hamel, you still have your hand up, so I please, you have another comment?
Yeah, I just have one other question. Um.
Okay.
Where do we stand with, with Kokomo? If I recall, we were gonna have him come in and address us on some issues?
Yeah.
What's going on with that?
Was unavailable and our attorney was unavailable this evening and she would like to be part of any portion of that um, conversation because there is, um, enforcement on going with, um, wetlands. She explained that at the last meeting.
And also Maureen, I think what Zig, um, on Christian Lane, right before, where Zig, right after Royal Machine on the right-hand side coming towards New Britain, I don't know what's going on there, but it looks like a truck stop in there. There's junk in there, there's all junk.
That's the application, that's the application that was the receipt of the new applications this evening.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
All right, anyone else?
I've been talking about for three or four months of.
Okay, all right. So I'm not hearing anything else. So at this point, it's eight twenty-five and I would love to have a motion to adjourn.
I'll give you that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Jersey. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Rogan. Further discussion, and all those in favor?
Yeah.
Those opposed? So moved.
The earliest night I ever.
Yeah.
It's still bright out.
Yay.
Night, everyone. Thank you for.
Good night, everyone.
Congratulations.
Sorry about the hassles that you had.
No, we're good. No, we're good. I'm not that smart, but we're all right.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
My meeting, my meeting's over.